We're going to call this.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to call the Crystal Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Eible.
Here.
Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
We have a call.
All right, thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first, we're gonna go with an approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion on the approval of the agenda? Go ahead, Nancy.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. We have a proclamation for today, and that is Black History Month. I'll read that into the record at this time. Black History Month for February 2023. Whereas the City of Crystal is committed to recognizing and honoring all members of our community. And one of the city council's priorities is that Crystal be a city in which all feel welcomed. And whereas across the United States, this February, millions of Americans are joining together to celebrate the accomplishments and lasting impacts of our country's black leaders, citizens, and people. And whereas in this month-long national celebration, we applaud the contributions of the black community to build lasting change for generations to come. And whereas the City of Crystal's recent establishment of the Inclusion and Diversity Commission will help further the goal of identifying ways to eliminate barriers and promote safe, welcoming, inclusive, and diverse communities. And whereas the City of Crystal, the City of Crystal Council invites all members of the community to commit to understanding justice, freedom for all. Now, therefore, I, Jim Adams, Mayor of Crystal, do hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month in the City of Crystal, dated the 7th day of February 2023. Thanks for help with that. Do we have a consent agenda before us? I'll read that into the record. Consent agenda is first, the approval of the minutes from the regular work session on January 12, 2023, work session from that same date, regular council meeting on January 7, 2023. And next item is the approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in the city clerk's office. And then adoption of a resolution accepting donations. And the final item is approval of joint powers agreement with the City of Maple Grove under the pups, pets under police security board. I would like to pull 4-4 off of this agenda, just because it has a dollar amount attached to it if we approve it. So we'll just handle that first item before the regular agenda. So with that pulled, I'm looking for a motion to approve the rest of that consent agenda. Go ahead, Tracy.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Therese. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council. Is there anybody wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing nobody approaching, we will skip by open forum for today. And right into the regular agenda. And the first item on the agenda at this point is the consent item agenda number 4.4. And just pulling that off kind of as a process, because there is that $25,000 piece, I found that on page four. It's item G. And wanted to give you guys an opportunity to make sure that you understand this particular item clearly. I don't know if there are any questions or not, but you're welcome to come forward and speak on it.
But it's a little over 11% of 25,000, right?
Is that correct?
That is correct.
It's still money.
It is still money. I apologize. I shouldn't have put it under the regular, or the consent agenda. I should have put it under the regular, so I apologize about that. Do you want me to talk about it now?
Sure.
Sure, if you, yeah.
Absolutely. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, we use Pets Under Police Security for which, AKA pups, for our needs for animal control. We've utilized this service for the last several years, the 26 years I've been employed here with the city, so it's been a long time. And as the mayor pointed out, there is some cost with that. And they currently drafted, and with a lot of Deputy Chief Hubbard's help, the new joint powers agreement. And so we're just looking for approval from you for that agreement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Nancy.
This one, who makes up the board? I see composition. It's consisting one board member from each member city. Is it normally an officer or a chief?
It depends on the city. So for our city, Deputy Chief Hubbard is the primary person. I am his secondary. But mostly, it's comprised, again, it depends on the city. Some cities do have their chief, some has a lieutenant, some has their animal control person. It just depends on the city.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. How about a motion, anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve for pups. We don't have an official thing to read, so just making a motion for approval of the JPA for pups.
Awesome, looking for a second. Go ahead, Tracy.
I'll second.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Regular agenda, first item on that is the distributions of $25,000 or greater. First item is the IRS electronic refunded transfers paying system. I think that's not quite right, it's close. For the federal and FICA withholding tax for 1/623 pay date, $59,166. Health partners for January health insurance premiums is $127,723. Metcalf for wastewater service for February is $138,936. Shingle Creek for the annual dues of 2023 is $29,973. Flexible Pipe Tool Company for replacement of vehicle number 403 for the Jetter truck is $273,750. League of Minnesota Cities, 2023 workers' compensation for quarter one is $155,136. Interium Inc. for C-Hall remodeling project is $193,217. Minpara for employee city required contributions for pay date 1/2023 is $68,381. And then the IRS for electronic payments for federal and FICA withholding taxes for pay date 1/2023 is $66,234. Total disbursements of $25,000 or greater are $1,112,520.81. Are there any questions on any of these items for the council? Seeing no question, I'll entertain a motion. Therese?
I'll make a motion to approve expenditures over 25,000.
Awesome. Go ahead, John.
A second there, motion.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have our police chief here to address this again for domestic violence advocacy. So, welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I apologize, you're gonna see me a couple more times tonight, which I'm sure you're really looking forward to. So the first agenda item that you have before you is regarding Cornerstone, or I'm sorry, regarding an approval for a contract with Tubman. For the last several years, we have had Cornerstone as our advocacy service. And we've also had an embedded, as you remember, an embedded advocate within our organization. Last year, during budget discussions, we spoke to you about the fact that we wanted that service enhanced, meaning more of an impact for our victims of domestic assault, meaning we wanted that person here full-time. Thankfully, you approved that. During the last year or so, we've just noticed a little bit of a decline in services from Cornerstone, and so we were doing some research and spoke to Tubman and their services and have decided that they have quite a bit more services that we liked for our victims of domestic assault and have decided to go that direction. Currently, the contract is for $57,500. The budgeted amount for this year was $60,000, so it is under budget. So we're looking for approval.
All right, thanks, Chief. Any questions for Chief on this? Nancy, go ahead.
Are there specific examples of some of the services that Cornerstone couldn't provide?
Yes, so the biggest one that Tubman provides that Cornerstone doesn't is they have full-time attorneys that are on staff to assist with order for protections. And that's a huge asset. It's also a huge asset for a victim of domestic assault to be able to have that one-on-one connection with an attorney for just any questions related to domestic assault. So that was a big selling point for us. Another piece is they have an emergency shelter that will be available for our victims when needed. Cornerstone had that as well, but we have noticed that with Cornerstone, oftentimes the beds were unfortunately just unavailable. And then they have a 24/7 crisis line available for victims and for our staff, officers, to be able to contact them.
Okay, thank you, that's great.
Great question. Thank you. Anything else from council? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Nancy?
I'll make a motion to approve a contract with Tubman for domestic violence advocacy.
All right, looking for a second? Yeah, go ahead.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. And next item is the Joint Community Police Partnership Program. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, since 2017, we have been a part of the Joint Community Police Partnership Program with Hennepin County and several other cities within the county. Last year, I approached the cities of New Hope and Robbinsdale, telling them that they should consider going with this program because it has benefited us so much with regards to our diverse community. And the liaison that we've had over the last year has been absolutely fantastic. Not to say that the other liaisons that we had back since 2017 haven't been good, but NECA, who I'm hoping to bring before you so that you can meet her, has been outstanding. With that said, the cities of New Hope and Robbinsdale had decided to obtain and go through the Hennepin County Commissioners to obtain a liaison for their communities. However, we determined that our city as well could share two liaisons within three cities, which benefits us financially for about a $5,700 a year savings. It will be, just so you know, it will be most likely looked at within six months to a year or so to see if those two cities possibly may need to get their own, just like the mental health social worker. But this will at least get them in the door to be able to evaluate and see what their needs are further. So I'm asking for approval for the JCPP contract for 2023.
All right. Any questions on that one? Yeah, go ahead.
Would NECA stay with us, or would she be one that would go amongst the three cities?
Yeah, great question. So ironically, Deputy Chief Hubbard and myself are having a meeting tomorrow with the other chiefs and with NECA and her two bosses from Hennepin County. NECA will stay here primarily, and then she will assist the other liaison with different needs for those communities, but she will primarily be our liaison, yes.
Will there be any periods of time where, like, right now, we have our own, so we have 100% of it. Is there gonna be any areas where we're not gonna have that coverage?
No, no, she'll always be available. She may not be on-site here, you know, on the five days a week, but majority is that she's going to be after the discussion after tomorrow.
Okay. All right, very good. Looking for a motion, John?
Make a motion to approve a contract with Hennepin County for a joint community police partnership program.
All right, looking for a second. Tracy?
I'll second.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Next, we will talk about the JPA with Hennepin Counties, and this one is the Juvenile Probation Client Delinquent Prevention Initiative. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, once again. So since 2020, you, those of you who are on the council may have remembered that we approached you regarding this great partnership of a juvenile diversion program with Hennepin County and a few other cities. Deputy Chief Hubbard has been a part of this committee, and the good news is, is it's been going very well, so well that they have decided to continue with the grant money. It does not cost our city anything, it's not a match grant or anything like that, we just obtained the funds to be able to participate. And so we're just looking for approval for you regarding this contract.
So this is, the private organization is?
YMCA.
YMCA, and they're running the diversion program?
Correct, with our cities, yep.
Wow, didn't know they did that. Okay. Can you talk a little bit about what that looks like?
Yep, I'm gonna have Deputy Chief Hubbard come up, because he's the expert, so.
Yeah, I'm just.
Never been called. Good evening.
All right, expert.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, the pilot program that we started a couple years ago came from some of the juvenile officers working in the Northwest Metro. And to call it a delinquency program, I think is probably a little bit of a misnomer because that gives you a grandiose plan. This program is really targeting runaways, and specifically first and second-time runaways, with the idea being that this is a moment in time where we can capture them and hopefully intervene early on to get them into some services to figure out why are they running away, what is the causal effect here, what supports do they need in the household and the family to help them continue on. So that really is the crux of what we're doing. And so that initial pilot was with the YMCA, who does a vast amount of work in the area of delinquency, homelessness for juveniles, et cetera. And after getting through the pilot program, figuring out what worked, what didn't work, et cetera, now we've expanded and the county has come forward with some money to help. And so really, what it is, is the city's responsibility is to make referral of students. So if we have contact with a student after curfew or a parent calls in a runaway situation, which we get a lot of those calls, we offer this program up on a voluntary basis, both for the juvenile and for the parent to be able to partake in this. It is a multi-session, I'm gonna say six sessions, that they will meet with a youth worker and some group work, some individual work, some family work as it may pertain. And then, as a part of that, each of the partner cities will also offer up a staff member to come and interact at different times with the young people to make sure that their interaction with law enforcement is a positive one. So I'm summarizing a mouthful of lots of conceptual conversations into a condensed moment, but that's the high-level gist of the program.
Yeah, so I'm guessing there's quite a few services embedded inside of what the YMCA does?
Well, YMCA's got a vast amount of wraparound services. I have the honor of sitting on the Youth and Family Services Board for the Y of the Twin Cities, and it's a massive operation. So although this program is very targeted, I, one of the reasons that they're a good partner is that if we figure out that there is a, that we've got a homelessness issue, we've got some other kind of a delinquency or an actual probationary kind of deal, they have services that they can also wrap them into with that.
So is the structure similar to other Hennepin County diversion stuff, where they make the contract with YMCA and we are the beneficiaries of it? Or are we actually contracting with them?
The City of Brooklyn Park is the lead agency, and so Brooklyn Park is going to be the ones that will administer the grant through the YMCA with a steering committee that is representative of all of the cities. So the grant is being allocated to Brooklyn Park. Brooklyn Park will disburse the funds according to the contract with no take off the top, but so that there is a government entity that is holding those funds to make sure that the services are provided.
Okay, cool, very cool. All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, appreciate it. Looking for a motion on this one?
Make a motion.
Go ahead, John, thank you.
Make a motion to approve a joint powers agreement with Hennepin County and the cities of Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center, New Hope, Robbinsdale, and Crystal, right, and ourselves, right, for the Juvenile Probations Client Delinquency Prevention Initiative.
All right, thank you.
It's a lot, huh?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Mercury is here, he's our Public Works Director, and he is going to talk about new windows and doors.
Super exciting.
Yes.
I'm excited for that slide.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council. So this is a super exciting thing, unfortunately, the surprise is getting ruined. No pressure. The Landre Plante allocates funding for work at the self-lift station. So last year, we did a variety of stuff, moving a generator outside, replacing a pump. Now that the stuff that can damage doors and windows is done, we're gonna follow that up with replacement of the doors and windows, which is before you now. The one remaining item we have out there is actually just replacement of the floor on that first floor there. The original doors, the doors are original, the building, 1950s, so the goal, quite frankly, is to make it not look so much like a bunker. So the low quote there was $47,000. This is a photo of two of the sides of the building now. You see that cinder block wall, that's gonna get bricked in, sort of look like, you know, the rest of the building. You see that metal grate over the window on the right, that'll be going away. So yeah, here's the before picture, this is not quite the after picture. So with that, the motion before is authorizing the replacement for the windows and doors replacement.
I'm surprised you didn't have the dinosaur in there.
Yeah, on top.
There was way more thought than there should have been put into that last graphic.
Have him large over the top of the castle, right, I got it. So now that the interior work is done, which could have damaged the doors?
Because, so, they literally have to go through the door with the generator and to pull it out, and then the pump replacement. The door, it's actually an oversized door, and we have a crane set up, so they slide it through the door and then drop it, because that building, what you don't realize is you walk in there, it's 30 feet down to the pump. And so you go in there, and they have to lift all the stairs on the way to lower the pump down, and so, yeah, so they had to pull out the old generator, it used to be inside of the building, so they get pulled out, and then the new pumps had to be put in and dropped down, so.
Wow.
They'd be a little intentional about sequencing here.
Okay.
So the generator is on the outside of the building?
It's on the south side of the building now, correct, yep.
And this is at Bassett Creek, correct?
Correct.
That building there. And the question I have too is municipal builders is quite a bit lower than Magny Construction, and have you worked with municipal before?
So I believe that actually, we worked with Brad on contractors he's worked with for doors and stuff, and so that's where we got connected with these two. I'm not sure of the exact reason for the price, because the materials are the same, I would assume it's just a workflow thing on their end.
Thanks.
No, that makes sense. Any other questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Nancy?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize a contract for the replacement of doors and windows at the self-lift station.
All right, thank you, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Tracy.
Tracy. You said Therese.
I said Tracy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mumbled it, it was very bad, but I did it right.
I heard Tracy, so, yeah.
Yeah. I'll try to be more clear, but you guys are killing me on that one. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. All right, next, we have John Elholm here to, our recreational director here, talk to us today about the play area at Broadway Park. Welcome, John.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight with a variety of different projects to bring before you. The first of which is a new play area at Broadway Park. The current play area was built in 1999 and is in poor condition. It, excuse me, yeah, this was built in 1999, in poor condition, it is in the budget for replacing this year. It is a populous place for ground wasps to nest, so that's, we're hoping that'll go away as part of this project, too. A lot of public engagement on this. We brought playground plans out to our neighborhood meeting there last August. Online survey, we had those top two playgrounds were out there and giving people an opportunity to weigh in on those. The one on the upper left was chosen, but then with some modifications, so the one in the middle is the one that kind of came out of that process. Looked at, had kids selecting colors at Winterfest with stickers on the playgrounds. And then the Park and Rec Commission has been reviewing this project every month. So the playground in the park, currently, it is in the far southeast corner, and the plan is to move it more central to the park so that it's more adjacent to the open space, isn't quite so close to the roads, and should be a much nicer location for that. The budget for this, we do have funds in our Parks Fund, $185,000. We also have CDVG funds, thanks to John Sutter and a grant that we got through them. And then the project cost for the playground is $112,849 for the equipment and $72,596 for the installation. So they have a joint partnership through the state contract where we can purchase that. And then there are some other costs coming, like the concrete border and some of the other things. So the recommendation tonight is to approve a resolution entering into an agreement with Landscape Structured Inc. in the amount of $112,849 to supply the play area equipment and flagship recreation in the amount of $72,596 to install the play area equipment, both of which are in Broadway Park.
So on this particular item, we'll end up going over budget by the time we're done with the concrete, and I forgot what the fourth item was. Is that correct?
No. We have our capital budget plus a grant, so there actually will be, we will not, we should not be under budget, we should not be over budget.
Yeah, you should have the grant, sorry. Money, money. I read it. Yep, yep. I just added the numbers and said, hey, that's bigger than the budget amount. There we go. All right, thank you.
We're thankful for grants like that.
Yeah, no kidding. Forrest, go ahead.
Quick question, on the illustration where you're moving the park, I remember at that August meeting, there were discussions about the fence. Is the fence gonna be extended further now that the playground is?
The playground should be quite a ways off the road, and there would be a trail between it and the ground, so the, I don't anticipate extending the fence.
Okay, sounds good.
Go ahead, Nancy.
John, is, you mentioned earlier the ground wasp problem. What is solving that? Is it the moving and the materials for the play area, for the foot, the ground?
Yeah, there's a lot of, that playground's been in there a long time, and there's a lot of stuff in the ground, so, you know, putting wood chips in over the years.
Yeah.
So starting fresh will help with that.
Nice, thank you.
All right. No more questions, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, John.
It's my son's favorite park, so I'm all over this one. I make a motion to adopt a resolution in support of a play area replacement in Broadway Park.
All right, thank you, looking for a second? David?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right, next is picnic shelter for Broadway and Crystal Highlands Park. John?
All right. In this year's 2023 budget, we also have two picnic shelters, one for Broadway Park, one for Crystal Highlands Park. You may recall, both of these parks at one time had a warming house, and those were both removed, I believe in 2017, one of them might have been early 2018. But anyway, that, the picture is of the Broadway warming house getting removed. But we went through the same public engagement process with this. We had a neighborhood meeting at Crystal Highlands in July, Broadway Park in August. Online information was out there all fall and into the winter, public open house in October, and then the Park and Rec Commission has been involved in reviewing the plans as they were developed. So the plan is to, the picture here is of Bass Lake Park, so we are looking at installing basically the same shelter at Broadway and Crystal Highlands Parks. So the location here at Broadway Park is a little bit closer to 59th Avenue, recognizing people when they picnic, they are usually carrying coolers and things like that, so we want it to be somewhat close to the road. And then at Crystal Highlands Park, it's fairly close to Jersey Circle for the, kind of the same purposes. Basketball courts roughly in the same spot, and then also allows for some open space in that park. So the capital budget for this is, each park has $80,000 for a picnic shelter, $160,000 So the capital budget for this is, each park has eighty thousand dollars for a picnic shelter, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars total. The shelter cost is thirty-three thousand three seventy-four each for sixty-six thousand seven forty-eight total. And the thing we have going on with these two parks, at Broadway Park, because we have federal funds involved, we do pay prevailing wages on, on the installation of both the playground and the picnic shelter. So you see the two different costs for installation there, and that is due to the prevailing wage rates. And then there will be some additional concrete for the pad, for the posts and tables, grills, things like that, also coming out of this budget. So with that, recommendation is to enter into a resolution, or resolution entering into an agreement with Northland Recreation in the total amount of sixty-six thousand seven forty-eight to provide one twenty-by-twenty picnic shelter each in Broadway and Crystal Highlands Parks.
All right. Question? Go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you. I, I love the design of that shelter and that you can incorporate our logo in that circular part, too. That's really cool. Just wondered, materials-wise, and you said you've got one, a similar one up at Bass Lake Park? How is that holding up? But I know it's.
Very well. Yeah, it's metal post, metal roof.
Yeah.
Nine-foot eave, so, you know, you can't touch it real easily or get onto it really, so.
Very nice. Can't skateboard on it.
Pay attention. When we look at things like shelters.
Okay, great. It looks great.
Who would climb on the roof? I mean, come on.
You can get up.
Not related to the shelter, but related to the park project. On, on the basketball court, when, will that be this year, too?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Both of those two parks.
So are those flat? I mean, okay, let me back up. Maybe I should be asking a different question. Are we replacing the, the?
The blacktop, yes.
The blacktop? So we'll regrade it and make sure it's remaining, remaining flat?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so the next part of this, these redevelopment projects is the sidewalks or trails, all the concrete curbs, curb cuts.
Yeah.
Things like that. And then the basketball court is part of that. We've actually already ordered the ba, the hoops. So they're on order. They'll probably, I don't know when they'll come in, but.
Will that come before us, or is that?
The basketball hoops didn't, but the, all the paving will, yes.
All right. Only reason I'm bringing that up is when we, when we do a resurfacing, that doesn't change the grade at all. And sometimes we have over time or either by design, some slopage that may or may not be desired for some of these courts. And we've experienced that at Becker's, so I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing the boat on that.
Yeah, so like at Yonkers and actually Bass Lake, too, we redid the basketball courts in both of those. And actually, our, Mark's crew did a great job repaving those.
Excellent, excellent. Good. All right, any other questions? On the shelter, looking for a motion? John, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve a resolution in support of purchasing twenty-by-twenty picnic shelters for Broadway Park and Crystal Highlands Park.
All right, Nancy, do a second?
Yes, please.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Okay, Bassett Creek Park. John is here to talk about the pedestrian bridge. How's it going?
It's like the never ending.
This one's, yeah, this one's like, oh, seriously.
Can't wait.
There we go. All right. Now we'll head over to Bassett Creek Park, and this is one we've talked a lot about, both of these projects for quite a long time. So what we've done here is we combined two projects into one and went out for bid on them. So it's a Bassett Creek Park improvements. This includes the pedestrian bridge abutments. You may recall, the trust has already been ordered, and then the dog park. So looking at the master plan map back from two thousand seventeen, the dog park is up there in the northwest corner. The pedestrian bridge is pretty much right in the middle of the park. So that's the location of those. The capital budget from the parks fund for this is seven hundred thousand. This, the bridge, the cost seems to keep wanting to go up on this, so, but we have found some savings in some other projects of three hundred thousand to bring our available funds to a million dollars. We have spent about one hundred and eighty-three thousand so far on design costs, tree removal, bidding, down payment on the trust bridge, things like that. Construction estimate was five hundred and four thousand, and they did come in a little bit high. But Odessa Two is the low bid at five fifty-eight zero zero seven. And then we would have some professional services for construction management on the project as well. So the recommendation is to approve a resolution entering into agreement with Odessa Two in the amount of five five eight zero zero seven to install a pedestrian bridge in Dog Park and SRF Consulting in the amount of forty-nine thousand seven seven four for construction and other related services, both in Bassett Creek Park.
Nancy?
Did I read right that there's lighting on this bridge?
No, the lighting is, the lighting's in the parking lot.
Oh, in the parking lot? That makes sense.
Yeah, so the dog park has a parking lot associated with it.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. I just thought, oh, that'd be really nice for. Okay.
And I assume there's no lighting in the dog park?
Yeah.
There is not in the dog park there. I believe we do have a pole at the entrances of the dog park, but not actually in the dog parks.
Very good. And timeline, are you thinking once this gets approved?
Yeah, so the goal is to have them out there working, you know, the spring, road restrictions are going to come into play. So I'm assuming it'll be after road restrictions come off, so May.
May or so is when you expect completion?
So, yeah, we haven't met with them to go over the schedule yet.
Sorry to be so jumpy. I just have so many neighbors asking when that's going to be out. They're excited.
Yeah, go ahead.
Have we worked with Odessa before?
Yes, Odessa Two did our pickleball courts.
Okay.
Valley Place Park, all of the sidewalks. Actually, Bass Lake Park, they did all the sidewalks there as well. So we have a great relationship with them.
And they're going to put in something to keep the urine from the small dog park and just seeping into Bass Creek, right?
Well, there's a, it's, it's grass instead of dirt. You know, right now it's dirt, so everything washes off. So the idea is to get some turf established in there, so that will.
Is that what it's?
That way it'll infiltrate better.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any, anything else? Go ahead, Nancy?
I'd like to make a motion to award a contract for the dog park and pedestrian bridge improvements in Bassett Creek Park.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tracy.
I'll second.
Do you have a question? All right, you good?
If you have a question, now is the time to ask it.
Sure.
Okay, I was just going to ask, did Odessa submit other examples of doing bridge work? Because it's kind of different than like just paving.
Well, they're the general contractor, so they'll have, they'll have people on their team that can do the piles and things like that.
Okay.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right.
All right, it's me again.
Yep.
All right, now moving up to Grogan Park. This is one that was bid last year as well, and the bids came in very high. But it is the south parking lot of the community center. It will improve pedestrian access between the ball fields, the community center. All right, next is the location map. It is, this parking lot is just south of the community center building. And the budget for this is one point four six million dollars. Some expenses have been paid already of between a sixty thousand dollars. Our estimate on this was one point two eight million dollars, and the low bid is one million eighty-seven four four four. So it did come in under budget and, or under the estimate, I should say. So GMH Asphalt Corporation is the low bid, and then there would be some professional service costs as well on this. So the recommendation here is to approve a resolution entering into an agreement with GMH Asphalt Corporation in the amount of one million eighty-seven four 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 oh seven to install a new parking lot and SRF Consulting in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven twenty-five for construction and other related services, both in Grogan.
Right, John?
And just to reiterate, so also with this project, there's going to be some improvements in the parking lot itself in terms of how the parking lot is laid out, in terms of like access to the building. Help me out here, handicap spots that are closer to the entrance.
So the way it's laid out, the, the, the current parking lot is laid out, it's kind of like your typical, let's just pave from, you know, big square. So this one up on the drawing here, there is a sidewalk that goes north-south, right through the middle of it, with the handicap parking that goes up to that. So you can park against the sidewalk, walk the sidewalk to get into the community center. Currently, we have posts in, in the pavement, and actually just this week, someone drove over another one. So the current design is not working all that well, so this is going to allow for better pedestrian flow.
And then one last thing, so, and also the actual drop-off location, you know, to the community center, that's going to be improved as well.
Correct. The drop-off will be actually a little bit closer to the doors.
Very good. Thank you.
And two exit lanes, right turn.
Correct, two, two exit lanes.
Yep.
That's great.
All right. Any other questions on that?
I should point out, the bid last year was, I think, one point four million. So this one is just a little over one million, or just under one point one.
Nice to have the savings.
Go ahead, Nancy.
This is just a general question, not specific to this project. Just wondering, do you know or have an idea of the percentage of women-owned businesses that are considered or awarded for contracting in Crystal? Have you worked with any or there?
I do know our play area company is.
Okay, great.
So I don't know about these companies.
Very good, thanks.
That'd be great data to have at some point. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion? John, go ahead.
Make a motion to award of contract for south parking lot replacement in Grogan Park, the community center, project number S dot O two four two.
All right, Nancy?
I second.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries.
All right, then the next item is in regard to the aquatic center planning. On the screen here is just a listing of primarily the dates and real brief of kind of the, the process that's been gone, been gone through to date. In the memo in your packet, those are expanded quite a bit more than this. But started back almost two years ago when we hired US Aquatics to do inventory of the pool and figure out what's going on over there. About a year ago, we hired the Morris Leatherman Company to do a survey of the public, a phone survey. And then last August, we hired WSB to do a public engagement process. And then throughout there, there were several joint Park and Rec Commission, city council work sessions, and just city council work sessions. The proposed next steps on this, this project is to build on the public engagement results and comments that we received. So we know that there were a lot of, a lot of really great comments, and so we can take those and build on that. Review, review the feasibility of suggested improvements, provide first level of concept planning for improvements, and begin developing cost estimates for improvements at the pool. We do have a quote for professional services from WSB to begin that work. And on their team, they have Stantec. Stantec is a company, their predecessor built the pool back in the sixties. Stantec is the company that did the remodel in two thousand and five. And then HCM is the architecture firm that works a lot on, on projects like this, on the building part of that. So the recommendation is to approve a resolution entering into an agreement with WSB in the amount of twenty-four thousand to begin developing concepts and cost estimates for improvements at the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center.
Questions, comments? Okay, I have some. So when we started this two, what is it, two years ago? Year and a half ago? I can't remember. We were talking about replacing the pool as is. Now, when we, when we have improvements here, that's the first thing that caught my attention. Oftentimes, people use the term improvements when they're, they're doing just a, kind of like a remodel. And then that, that caught my attention, and it was tied back to suggestions that were done during some of the interviewing process. And when I got into the detail, I'm seeing some improvements to the building itself. When we started this, we were doing primarily with, with the pool itself, and now we're expanded into the building. And to me, it's feeling a little bit like job creep. And I'm, I'm concerned about putting that into the, into the contract for design. Next thing you know, we have three million for the, for the pool. Next thing you know, we're going to be a million up doing all the ADA improvements and everything. Once we start something on the building, we have to start bringing it up to, to regular code. And you alluded to that in your, in your narrative. So I'm thinking, can we not do job creep? I mean, that, that was the whole premise from the, from the council, that we deal just with the pool and not deal with the other.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so the, I think the number in there is about three point five million, and three of it was for the pool. And the other part that's been in the budget for many, many years that is to improve the entrance. And a lot of that is for security, safety reasons. It's the original entrance from the sixties. And to improve the, you know, how you pay and how you get into the building. That was the only part that was really going to get looked at is that whole facade entrance going into the building. But it wasn't looking at the restrooms or any of the concession stands or any of those kind of things. It was really looking at that entrance. And that's been something that's been in the capital plan for, well, I think since it was remodeled in oh-five.
So you're saying this isn't job creep? This is just opportunistic?
Yeah, but.
Necessity.
Well, necessity is.
Yeah. Because we did have an incident, well, last year or whatever, so I mean, it's part of this, making the, making the pool itself more secure. It's important.
I understand. I, I mean, it didn't talk about security. It talked about ADA improvements. And it, it just seemed to be a little bit beyond the scope that we initially set this journey on, so that's why I'm asking the question.
True.
When was that scheduled to, was it scheduled on the planning? I forgot when, when that was scheduled, the improvements to that, you say were already in the budget?
Oh, yeah. So the entryway has been kind of, that's been in the long-term plan for many years. The, the leaking pool has not been until recently, so that was added.
So, so my question is, when was it scheduled? We were obviously moving it up, right?
Yeah, the, the two kind of got tied, just because if you're in there working on things, it made sense to tie them, do them at the same time.
Okay, so that's an, I don't know. You don't know when it was scheduled?
When the, the entryway?
Yeah.
Well, right now, I think it's in twenty-four with the pool.
So it was real.
It was in twenty-three with the pool, and then I think it was in, because I know it's something that, since I've been here, we've talked about it every year, is how do we get this into the capital plan? And it's one of those things that keeps getting kicked out, so.
Okay. All right. So we won't have, that won't kick ADA into the bathrooms? We won't, we won't, we won't be intruding enough to make that happen? Okay, that's fantastic.
Thank you. And we can, we'll make sure of that, too. You know, if anything, we're talking about, and like, that's the nice thing about having an architect on the team is they would know those answers.
Right. I mean, my initial thought was, okay, so, so we've got, we've got these surveys we've taken, and some ideas came out for improvements. And to me, it felt like it was beyond the scope, and I understand you're bringing in stuff that was actually in the capital budget. And those other things won't be considered.
Right, and then when we're talking about improvements to the pool, you know, one of the comments is to make parts of it shallower.
Right.
You know, so it's kind of looking at all of those things. I don't think there's any desire to, you know, expand exponentially. It's kind of the same general area, but, you know.
Right, because of.
How exactly does it fit in there?
The moment we start changing the footprint and changing, making those kind of changes, all of a sudden, we're looking at.
Right, and then all of a sudden, your pumps aren't big enough, and, you know, so, yeah.
Never ending. That was my concern. Okay, cool. Anything else?
Just a quick clarification, though. I, I believe, John, if we're correct, there are ADA plans for the restrooms in late twenty twenties. Because I know there's like four point six million slated for work at the pool over the next eight years, I believe. So I think it's coming, I, I just want to caution that it's, it's coming, right? It's not, it may not be part of this. I also think some serious consideration should be for trying to make it. I also think some serious consideration should be for trying to make an inclusive pool for everybody and not make the bathrooms inclusive. I think that's something to just consider as we go through this. But there is work for that building scheduled in the current long-term plan.
In '05, some family restrooms were installed, so I think that helps with that as well.
Thank you for that. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
I can do that.
John.
I make a motion approving a resolution in support of concept planning for the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center and surrounding area.
All right, one second.
I'll second that.
Thanks. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Usually this public works, it, you know, kind of squeezes all the money out of us, but I don't know.
Oh, he's coming.
Oh.
Maybe not so much this year, okay. Our city manager, Adam Bell, is here to address the council in the vacancy in the office of Nancy LaRoche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you just noted, Councilmember LaRoche notified me of her pending resignation from the city council due to her relocation of Crystal. The city council held a work session immediately preceding this meeting to discuss that process. What was decided at the meeting was to go with the option B, the alternative timeframe for the appointment process. And the, so that, that will be made public starting tomorrow with the application for the public to apply to, for the candidate appointment, for the council member appointment. The question that's before the council tonight that it needs to act on are two things. One, there's a joint resolution for accepting the resignation of Councilmember LaRoche and then declaring the vacancy. Under the city charter, the council does that and then the council then makes the appointment. As was discussed during the workshop, there, the charter doesn't outline a timeframe or a time requirement for that appointment process. But because that, or because the remaining, remainder of the term is less than two years, that, that remainder of the term will be completed by the appointed council member. And then the seat will be up for a normal election, the 24 city elections. So with that, the resolution is for you, accepting the resignation and declaring the vacancy. Just one thing to note, Councilmember LaRoche said that her last day as a resident is expected to be the 25th of February. So that is the selected date of the vacancy, of when it'll be effective. And that will be effective at 12:01 a.m. on the 25th. With that, I stand for any questions.
So it'd be offensive to vote no?
Well, speaking of voting, I don't, can I vote or do I have to abstain on this one?
I don't know.
Troy?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend you abstain of this.
Okay, I, so too.
I recommend you vote no too. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Teresa?
I'll make a motion, accepting a resignation of Nancy LaRoche and declaring, declaring a vacancy in office.
All right, looking for a second? Go ahead first, first.
I second that motion.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Abstain.
One abstain, abstaining. We don't have to do roll call on that, do we? No.
Mr. Mayor, you typically do, just as a matter of practice.
All right, roll call on that one.
Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cumming.
Aye.
Councilmember Idbo.
Aye.
Councilmember Kamish.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
So this is your last council meeting?
Is it really?
No, two weeks.
There's one in two weeks.
Two weeks.
I'll be back.
What kind of car are you driving?
One, one thing to note as well, Councilmember LaRoche will be able to serve out the rest of her term until the vacancy occurs. So there will be one more, the, the work session later this week that she had said she won't be able to attend. But the meeting on the 21st of February, she will be still filling her seat.
Very good. All right, we have announcements. Read those into the record next, that's not a lot of announcements, is it? The next council meeting, work session is Tuesday, is Thursday, excuse me. The next city council work session is Thursday, February 9th at 6:30 p.m. In the council chambers at City Hall and available to attend via Zoom or in person. City offices will be closed Monday, February 20th for observation of the President's Day holiday. And then the next city council meeting is Tuesday, February 21st at 7:00 p.m. In the council chambers at City Hall. And a reminder that all meetings and work sessions are recorded and available for viewing and listening at crystalmn.gov. Any other announcements from the council? Nancy.
I just had a question, how is winter load? Sorry, John. It looked fun, I was unable to attend, but I did drive by afterwards, there were a lot of people there.
Councilmember LaRoche, it was fantastic.
Yay, and you had great weather, it went above zero.
It was great weather, we had kids dance out there. One thing was really cool, we've gotten, connected with a radio control vehicle person who has studs on the tires. And so we had one ice rink was kids running radio controlled cars out there. And then we had Three Rivers Park District had kick sleds out there, so people could do that. Crafts inside the building, hot chocolate. Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
That's fantastic. Any other fun activities, big events coming up in February or? Family Fun Night, is that a thing?
Well, I'll, I'll just say that we're making the final touches on our spring summer brochure. So we're on finalizing our, our third and probably final draft of that. So you'll see that coming out to houses here pretty soon. So a lot of efforts being put into getting that, that publication put together.
Yeah, I was just thinking about Family Fun Night, isn't that usually early March? Or is that, have we brought that back yet with the hamster ball and all those fun inflatables inside?
I will need to get back to you on that.
Okay. Stay tuned, right?
Any possibility expanding or expanding pickleball evening hours, any in there for the spring?
I know we have volleyball Monday, Thursday, pickleball Friday. And a lot of pickleball Monday, Tuesday, Thursday mornings.
I'm talking about evening.
Right.
You gotta, first time and then weekend, so there's no during the week. Okay. Nothing there. All right, anything else?
Thanks, John.
All right, looking for a motion to adjourn? John? Did you see that respect?
I'll second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Have a great couple of weeks.